Good evening, one and all. I see we have a quorum. So would you take role Tracy?
Apologize, couldn't find my cursor. Harrington.
Here.
Hoffman.
Here.
Pollack.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Wason.
Here.
Okay, the agenda is before you and there's been no additions or deletions, a motion to accept.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Work session. Ryan?
Thanks Mayor. Well, we're excited to present to you the work we've been doing on the City Hall design, both the, well, a number of things, the floor plan, the site plan, or the elevations, and also the site plan. And I'm gonna just turn it over to Kevin, because I think he's gonna kick it off, and then I believe he's gonna turn it over to his team to talk through what we've been working on.
Alright. Thank you, Ryan. Yeah, like Ryan mentioned tonight, we're gonna show you the concept plan for the new city hall. We are excited to show you this, and not just because we think it looks cool, but because we think that the group has really thought through this and have a really good comprehensive plan, not only for the city hall, but also for the civic campus and the old downtown area. If you remember, before we started, the mayor kind of challenged us just to really make sure that the site will work. And we think that you'll be pleased when you see the results. Hopefully you will. So tonight, we're gonna show and discuss with you the programming, the floor plan, the building exteriors, the site and the expansion areas, and then we'll discuss how this project relates to the civic campus, the police and fire stations, and then also how this relates to the community visioning and identity. And then lastly, we'll discuss the schedule and the costs, and then we'll open it up for questions or any comments that you might have. But first, some background on the process that we just completed. So we started about five months ago in February with lots of meetings with a core group of Ryan and Tracy and all the city hall department heads. And I do want to say a big thank you to all those people that were part of that group. It was a big time commitment. It was a good group, and we had really good discussion and collaboration. And that process included surveys of all the departments to discuss their wants and their needs and their growth projections for their department, and meetings with staff to discuss the options for mechanical, electrical, and IT systems, sustainability, and energy efficiency. We visited the current city hall, the communications department, and the new police station. And then we also toured other city halls, and we learned what worked well or not so well for them. That was pretty valuable. We also coordinated this project with the Dubuque Street Phase One project. That was very important for two reasons: the scheduling, which we'll go over later, and then also planning for the site and all the new street alignments. We reviewed the master plan that was prepared with the police station project. We did find a couple of issues with that plan. For example, we found that a police station to city hall connection would not work very well due to some overflow drainage routes and security concerns. And we prepared numerous options and gained agreement for the floor plan, the building size and configuration, how the building relates to and is oriented on the site, how and where the building will grow in the future, how the building exterior should look. And then after we reached consensus for the building and the site, we looked for another opportunity, and there was one. The group came up with what I think's a really cool one. It's kind of a multi-purpose training meeting room that opens up into an indoor/outdoor public event plaza. I don't remember who came up with that idea. It was probably Tandy or Natalie. Ryan claims that it was him, but we really hope you like it. It provides function for the city hall and addresses the feedback from the community visioning and identity surveys. So that was briefly our process, and now I'll turn it over to others to show you the final concept. And with us tonight from Chive Hattery is Emily Naylor and Emma Riordan. They're the landscape architects, and Natalie Opadoll and Tandy Branhamen, the architects. Emma's gonna show, she already is showing her screen, and she did the renderings and the building modeling, and she'll kind of be driving the show tonight. And Tandy's gonna start by showing you the floor plan of the building. So Tandy, if you're ready.
Yeah, can you hear me okay? Okay, great. Alright, so this is just an overview of the floor plans of the city hall facility. And one of the things I like, Kevin's comment about not knowing who came up with the idea on the community room, and that's because it really, as he said, was a really collaborative effort to come up with this final concept that we have here. We had at least 14 meetings, probably more, with the individual directors of each department to come up with this. And it resulted in a two-story building that you see here. The first floor is on the left of this image, and the second floor is on the right of the image. It is about 17,000 square feet. It holds currently about 32 workstations. That's more or less eight workstations that are already present to allow for some growth, and overall can be expanded within this footprint to include a total of about 40 to 45 workstations. It's really, like I said, a collaborative effort, and some of the key takeaways from all of the meetings that we had in the group effort was the idea of fostering community, community within the public setting as well as community within the workplace. It really needed to be adaptable and flexible. It needed to allow for growth in a way that would be simple and allow for future expansion without compromising the functions of the building. And it really needed to be cohesive and relate to the civic campus. This is being located on the same side as the police station and nearby the fire station. So having that cohesive appearance was really important to the group. So we are going to start by zooming in to what we call the more public side of the plan. Thank you, Emma. This is on the first floor, and this sort of orange shaded area is the area that we really have designated as somewhat of the public zone. That is the council chambers room, and then we also have, to the right of that, the space that Kevin mentioned, which is a community space, a meeting room can be used for city hall. It can be used for groups outside of city hall. It's also the closed session meeting room for the council meetings. The wall that everyone's been talking about that can open and join with the exterior public space, thank you, Emma, is located there, and that's a folding glass wall that allows that space to really open up and actually create an inside-outside space. There's a kitchenette within the, in the room, and that would allow for events and have access to water and the refrigerator, and really open up to that plaza space and allow for some community interaction. It is connected to a lobby space that you can see that's just south of the council chambers and the community room. That is a corridor lobby that connects the east and the west, the west side being where the parking lot would be located, and the east side being more of a pedestrian connection that connects to the plaza space. Directly south of that are the windows that then the public, if they were to come in and pay a bill or have a question about a permit, they would interact with city hall staff in that location. You can see two areas that are shaded in gray. One is a single-user restroom. That restroom would be open to the public during the day, and the gray shaded area to the right is a larger set of restrooms that would actually be used by city hall staff during the day, able to be locked off separate with the door to the lobby from the public. But if there was an event or when there is a council meeting, that set of restrooms, actually, the door can be unlocked and opened and be usable by the public and still have a secure office space. A lot of thought was put into that with the different directors, and I really think it provides some good opportunities to really interact with the exterior and have some events out here and still have access to some bathrooms. So Emma, we'll move to the, to the more private side of the space, as we call it. This is the office portion of the floor plan. This is where all of the city hall employees would be located. We have some different shading here to represent different parts or different departments of the building. The pink area is designated as the administration, building, and planning departments. The green area is meeting space that would be shared. The yellow areas are storage. And then the area that has kind of a gray angled line work on it, those are extra workstations that are planned in for expansion. Now, the thing to take note of here on this particular floor plan, as well as the second floor, is that the locations of staff really came from the department heads. After we got this plan more or less to this level of completion, we asked the directors to sit down together and actually think through how they were going to spend their days working, interacting with one another, interacting with the public, and where it would make the most sense for different departments to be located. So this really came from the directors in the layout of how these floor plans work. The white area that is south of the pink areas, that is a break area and a production area that would have a large format printer. Those are combined into one space to allow for, again, some community interaction within the staff. It allows for meetings and other gatherings to celebrate an anniversary. It also creates a connection to the exterior with the door that's on the east wall that can go outside if people would like to enjoy their lunch break outside and in the sunshine. The doorway to the west side that is over by what we call the mudroom is the employee entrance. That's located adjacent to a space where the building department can come in and take off their muddy boots. There's also a shower located there to encourage people to find other ways to work besides vehicular. So if somebody wanted to bike to work, they would have a place to clean up if they wanted to. I think that's a quick summary of this floor plan, so I think we can move on to the second floor. So on the second floor, you can see that there's an elevator in the upper-left corner. That's near the main entrance. Next to the stair, that's the main circulation, probably the area that if public were to come to the building and be greeted by staff downstairs, they would be brought up to this staircase and elevator up to a lounge area that's up at the top of the stairs. That's a space where people can wait. If they have a meeting with legal, they could wait in this area. If you had outside staff coming in, or if you had developers coming in that were going to be having a big meeting, and they needed a quick place to sit down and do some work, they could do that there. There's also a counter along the wall with some chairs that we've planned as kind of a transitional work area for people who only needed to be there for a short period of time, but wanted a place to plug in a laptop. Below that is a small production area for sink and coffee, etc., coffee machine. So upstairs, we have some additional administration space, again colored in the pink areas that you see there. The purple is designated as the communications department. They have a studio space that's planned to be a green screen room where they can conduct their podcasts. They can do interviews, a really versatile space, and when it's not being used for that, it can be used as meeting space for other departments. And then we have the blue area, which is a semi-private legal HR suite. And then again, you can see the green conference meeting space. On this floor, we have a much larger room with the idea that this is where some developers, planners, other outside groups could come in and have some meetings. There also could be director meetings in this location without having to take over the community use room on a regular basis. You can see on this floor that there is, again, a lot of expansion for additional employees in the gray-hatched area. One of the things that came through all of the meetings was, again, flexibility and adaptability. We laid this out in a way to have the same number of open office spaces on both the first and second floors. That way, depending on which departments grow, they can shift and relocate. There's a good combination of private versus open offices on both floors to allow that expansion to happen in whatever ways it ends up going on. So I think that is the summary of the floor plans. So one of the big questions, of course, as we continued on with this in our site discussions, was how is this building going to fit on-site? What does it look like relative to the other site amenities and elements? So you can see here, this is the building placed on our site plan. To orient everyone, you can see that the police station is at the lower-left corner of this site plan. So we are showing our building, this new city hall, up towards the reoriented North Dubuque Street, Front Street, Dubuque Street intersection. We have a parking lot to the west. Within that parking lot space will be some underground detention to handle stormwater. This arrangement and placement of the building allows us to maximize the parking as well as provide a really nice space to the east of the building addition that can be used by the public. You can have community events there. There's a really great green space, and we will be showing you that in a little bit more detail here soon. South of that green space is an access drive for the police department. They really wanted two ways in and out of their parking lot when the police station was developed, and we are able to get that into this project as part of the design. There are two outlines that are kind of faint and hard to see, but I'll have Emma take her cursor and trace over those a little bit. On the west, you can see that there's an outline in that location, and on the east, there is also an outline. Those are two options for proposed future expansion. So if city hall continues to grow, if the city grows and more space is needed, this provides two different ways to do that without disrupting city hall operations and without displacing something significant on-site. We've located the one over on the west side to be outside of the boundaries of the detention system, and on the right side, on the east side, within the green space, so as not to impact the plaza. So again, as we continue to develop this, context was really important. Again, the police station has just been completed, and there's been some great improvements to the fire department. The group was really cognizant of that and wanted to make sure that we were respectful as we continued on with the exterior design to really make this a cohesive statement, all the while continuing to tie back to the community and to the improvements that have been happening across the city. So from this point, I think we're gonna go right into sort of what we would call our live model. This is how we have been working through the exteriors and site plan with the directors and investigating different, you know, appearances and things with the building. So this is a view. To the right is the police station, and straight ahead of us is the new city hall. This is the west side. Of course, you can see that parking lot. And if you're coming by vehicle, this is the direction you would come and the facade that you would see. And we can move towards that a little bit as we take in the appearance of this. So the mass on the right is that more private office area, two-story building, and it's probably gonna be a little bit lagged here as we can work through the model. The plans for that side, that part of the facade, are to match the police station brick. There's a lighter brick color over there, and we would really like to maintain that appearance. And then really put an emphasis on this more public part of the facility. The center mass is the stair tower and elevator. That is taller for a couple of reasons. It's necessary for the elevator, but also it helps us screen some rooftop mechanical equipment that we need to have in order to serve this building. There's a screening element that we're utilizing here, which will also carry over and help continue to screen that equipment. The entrance from the parking lot is located directly adjacent to that. And then we are showing the council chambers to the left, the sloped roof, and some natural light in the corner with the window. The material on that piece of the building, we are planning to use the limestone that is similar to the material that is used on the water treatment plant. The center taller mass, we are looking at using a smooth metal panel in a grayish tone to be complementary to the police station, but not directly mimicking the police station. As we move towards the north, we can take a look at the next facade. So again, as we're turning the corner, you can see that the council chambers has some natural light up high, some transom windows. This is something that we saw when we took some tours of other city halls, was just getting natural light into that council chambers in a way that's not going to be distracting to the events and things happening inside the meeting room. So we're showing some really nice upper windows with the limestone, some great plantings, and you start to see the interaction with the plaza as we move around this facade. So as we move more towards the east, this side of the building, this is the public meeting room that's here to the left. This space is going to also have a metal panel. It's sort of a quilted-style zinc panel that we are showing to really try to give this its own feel and connection to the site elements. We've got an overhang shown here. This overhang is going to provide some shading from the sunlight, the direct east light for meetings that would be occurring here in the morning. And it also provides some coverage for weather and for really connecting that space when those doors are open to the public events plaza, creating a really nice indoor/outdoor space. So as we continue around towards the left here, yep, this is towards the east facade. Again, we move around and go back to that more simplified office area, two-story volume that's matching that police station brick. You can see the police station in the background and how these two parts of the building really tie and relate to one another nicely. On the south facade, we are showing a lot of glass. Natural light was incredibly important to the group as we developed the floor plan and finding ways to get as much natural light into spaces as we can. This natural light is into the open office area and really getting all of that light all the way back into those spaces so that each employee has their fair share of natural light. We do show some screening elements up at the top. That is going to help cut down on some of the glare from due south light. And also helps tie to some of those other screening elements, both on the site as well as on the north facade here. Some of the ways that we're bringing some natural light in downstairs, we have windows into all of the offices. The walls between the offices and the open office space will also have some windows. And then we're also planting some skylights into the lobby area. It's a little harder to see on the rendering, but those are some ways that we're bringing some natural light into the first floor plan. So that is a very quick summary of everything that we put into this as a group. The whole entire team and directors, we've really appreciated their input. It's been a group effort, and we think it's turned into just a really, really nice facility. So at this point, I think that we are going to take it to the sites and start talking a little bit about the site elements.
Thanks, Tandy. Great job, and I think it's just a testament to how integrated the site and the building and the collaborative process was. It's hard to talk about one without the other. So you already did a great job starting to explain the space. What we're showing here is a more robust public plaza than probably originally was envisioned. You know, we have been working throughout, that's a good spot, Emma, good stop right there. We've been working, you know, in all parts of town to really start to develop that community identity, the different materials we use at the streetscape projects, the roundabouts. We formalized that with developing the community identity, the master plan. And this actually serves as, you know, we coined the term parklet, some of the smaller rest space along trails like on St. Andrews, etc. But this really becomes the opportunity for a crown jewel, a civic center, how we tie it all together. It makes, it reaches out and makes sense to all those corners of the community where we really made those investments and continue to have planned investments with improvements that are on the way. So as Emma will kind of scroll down in here, it, as you see, it connects the space without that standard sidewalk that you would find just, you know, six feet off the back of curb. We really want people who traverse along Dubuque or Front and to be part of the space, even if they're transitioning through. We did a really, it was a very challenging job not to use too much hardscape. It does appear that there are a lot of plantings, and what I want Emma to swing around and show some of the tents, some of the opportunities, you can really get an idea of scale here. Even though we peeled back and tried to balance the green space with the hardscape, there's a lot of space here, a lot of rooms to have small community events, large community events. Each of those tents are 10 by 10. You see a vehicle in there. We can pull food trucks in. All along, just being cognizant of the space and the potential future for expansion. Should you want to go to the east, we're not putting the expensive plantings and hardscape in that building floor plan area. One of the screening elements that is so important to the building facade, we're pulling it into the site and using that in some of the, you know, whether it be signage or just some dividing dividers, and Emma might swing around and show that how we're creating some privacy for the staff patio. That's a good view. Just screening, giving some separation there from that police egress, but... Yeah, there's a nice view of how we're using that screen panel to just, you know, allow some sheltered, screened dining for the staff, yet still part of, part of the overall public space when necessary. You know, Kevin started us off tonight and talked about the challenge that the mayor had laid down, and I think that this is a really interesting project. It's an interesting site. It had a lot of challenges. We had to push and pull in a lot of directions, but the parking's exactly where it needs to be. It's on the low part of the site. It's, it feels very contiguous with reds parking. It's very logical. And the roadway project that was necessary to organize the Dubuque-Front Street created this kind of, you know, an odd space, and this just really maximizes it. It really connects down to what we're doing at Cherry Street with the site furnishings, with the pavers, and again, just creates that opportunity to have, you know, possibly farmer's market, you know, and all the stands in the parking lot, and then you've got either around the north end of the building or through the building, a connection to a space where you could have, you know, live music or where you sit and eat your kettle corn or whatever it is. We know you're an active community and have lots of things programmed. This just is another opportunity to create that heart of that civic campus. I don't really think I have too much. I don't know if I missed anything. Emma, I'll probably have you swing back around. I know the next slide will go right into schedule and cost, so we'll leave you with a great view here.
Alright, thank you, Emily, and thank you, Tandy. You guys did great. So this is the, this is the schedule. We just completed the concept phase, and our plan would be to start design right away and have the design completed for bid documents in February of 2022. Originally, we were looking at having a 2023 substantial completion, but we quickly realized that the Dubuque Street Phase One project needed to be completed first to have the site opened up and the roads open and functioning. So it pushed everything back a year. Our plan would be to complete the bid documents February 2022, and then just put it on the shelf and wait until fall 2022 to bid it, or actually just kind of monitor the bid environment. You know, right now, the material prices are still fairly volatile. It's not a great time to bid a project anyway. So this is actually kind of a good thing so that we can just kind of talk to the GCs in the area and find out, you know, are they looking for work? We're gonna have quite a bit of time to just kind of monitor that and put them out on the street whenever we feel it's a good time. So the plan would be to start construction first thing in 2023, and then have a substantial completion of March 2024 with a tentative move-in date of May or June of 2024. And then if you want to go to the costs. Okay, so everything you've seen tonight, it totals about $9 million. The, actually, the building and the city hall site themselves, they're just about $7.5 million. So that's, you know, fairly close to the original budget. But the public event plaza, as you can see, that's about a million. But the the public event plaza, as you can see, that's about a million in itself. And then we also discovered during the concept process that there's an IT hub project that should probably occur at the same time, and that's about 100,000. And then we added in a placeholder of 300,000 for furnishings, equipment and appliances. And when you total all that up, it's about nine million. So I think that's about it for our presentation tonight, and I think I'll open it up for questions and comments.
Personally, I really think that you've met the challenge that wanted to have you take up. I'm very pleased with the concept and results that I see. Certainly gives a modern architectural feel for a building. Public access is very good, blends with the police building and the work that's been done on that. And up to this point, nice job, folks.
Thank you.
Kevin and Steph, what level of questions do you want to try to hit? You know, big picture stuff or where are we in this process right now?
I guess we'll take any questions. You'll find out if I'll have the answer.
Chris?
You're muted, Chris.
Sorry, folks. I'm going back and forth on the screen. I recognize that when I leave, you can't hear me anymore. So I'm gonna leave myself unmuted. I've got I've got a few questions that I might just rattle through in no particular order, if you don't mind, Kevin. The on the outside, and I think maybe this is just a drawing right now, will there be access to Reds parking lot? Will it be a fluid space between Reds and the city hall parking space? Or what do you envision that look looking like? Because right now, I mean, this is a rendering. It's not there's there's nothing that combines them up there on that north side of our parking lot.
Yeah, and that is a really good question, Chris, and and we don't have that answer yet. We we haven't talked to Matter, Facework, or any of them about particulars on here. We wanted to definitely show you guys this first before any discussions like that might happen.
Okay, okay. I I this is I I will I'll say this is this is outstanding. This is really not what I thought would be presented to us. It's better. I I like the access off of Dubuque Street for the public, for the police department. You can get to it from Main Street as well. So I think it it blends really well. The a couple of things, one of them is just kind of a flow. A couple of years ago, when we were talking about this the last time, there was an, can you tell me a little bit more about what council chambers will look like as far as the production and the communications department being down there? And you said you've run this with staff, so I don't think maybe then communications department has any need to be down near city hall and or I'm sorry, during in the council chambers for production purposes. Was there any challenges with having their office not located near council chambers?
Kevin, do you want me to take that? And I don't know. I don't know if Nick is here that he would want to chime in or not.
I can jump in also, but why don't you take it first?
Yeah, so we we did have a lot of conversation about different departments and their localities. There's a lot of public interaction, daily public interaction, I would say, between the administration and planning and and building departments. And there is some some daily communication with the communications department. The bigger question was just, you know, with all of the things that the communications department maybe needs to have downstairs or bring up and down for different things, was that going to be an issue? And from Nick's perspective, and I don't want to completely speak for him, but he has access to the elevator. If he has access to the elevator, that was a huge, a huge thing for him. And as long as he has ample space down on the council chambers level within that space for the sound area, then in terms of the council chambers function, that is not an issue. It really just comes down to more of an equipment moving back and forth if they go offsite, if they're going to do interviews offsite. They really were excited about having that extra space up on the second floor to do their podcasts and to do interviews upstairs. So some of that equipment that they would normally maybe move back and forth in order to do those things, they don't have to move in this concept. So after the whole group met separately as directors and talked through where they thought each department should belong, they came to this conclusion as making the most sense for each department.
Okay, that sounds good. I I assume Nick had plenty of input in that and
Oh, yes.
He was good. There's there's not then a repeat of quit. How much equipment is repetitive? Do you have any sense of that? Or or is the equipment that's needed for council meetings, you know, kind of just for council meetings? And if it needs to go offsite, it's, you know, it's just down there. I I don't know. I'm just trying to be efficient with the equipment and with costs and location of stuff. So it sounds like you may have addressed that already then with Nick.
I think we did. And I I would say that, you know, most of that equipment in the council chambers is going to be permanent. And what he'll have in the storage area and in the in the green room will be stuff that can be moved around. So I think from an efficiency standpoint, it'll be as efficient or probably more than he is right now.
Yeah, I can imagine.
I did want to just also say, you know, that your question was one of my first questions when I when we were talking about this, because I remember Nick once telling me he thought that their department should be, you know, located within the council chambers somewhere very close to it. And
Right.
After these conversations and what Candy just explained, you know, that wasn't as important. And a bit another important factor here was security and having you can see that there's a public part of the building and then there's a office part of the building that's secure and locked. And so having all the employees in that one side where it's secure and locked and access needs to be granted to get in was also important to the group.
Okay, and just one last question, then. Thank you, guys, for that explanation. The last one is just about that broad expanse of windows on the south side of the building. You guys do this for a living, but doesn't this just heat up a building, even if you've got shade over there? Does it make any sense to move all of that glass, which is awesome, to the north side of the building? So you still get natural light in there, but you're not baked by the the sun and heating up the interior, which then costs us money to cool it down in the summertime?
Candy, can you?
Sure. He gives me the hard question.
Sounds like it, yeah.
No, no, that is a valid point. And I think there are a lot of details to work through with the glazing, how much glazing there actually is at this level. We're still missing other critical elements like exactly how deep the roof structure is. So I think there's going to be a lot of detail elements that impact actually how much glazing we do truly have. There's different types of glazing that can help reduce heat gain. Glazing has come a long way from the days of just having all glass buildings. So I think putting the right thought into those different systems is important, making sure that we include the correct shading systems to help cut down on some of that direct heat gain. More often than not, buildings are I don't want to say this is completely accurate 100% of the time, but a lot of times in Iowa, buildings are actually driven by winter. So heat gain in the winter is great. And then we do have to counter that in the summer. We need to make sure that we have good strategies. We will also be working as part of this process with a group that is connected to the utility organizations, the utility companies to work through sustainability concepts, things like heat gain and the glazing strategies that we use, offsetting the different mechanical systems that we'll be looking at and making sure that we right-size that equipment. We'll be doing that all together in totality to make sure that we have the right fit for the amount of natural light. Trying to move that natural light to the north and create a really solid wall there, while it may not be an issue for the exterior for the interior. Much of that natural light would be blocked by restrooms. We have two single, this is something I did not mention when we walked through the plan, but we have two single user restrooms on the north, a wellness room on the north for people who nursing mothers, somebody who might have a migraine. We have some spaces along there that really aren't conducive to natural light and would really cut down, I think, on the the environment within the actual office space itself.
Understandable. Thank you for that explanation.
Yep.
Other questions?
Mayor, if I may?
Please.
Thank you. So first, Mayor, thank you for the challenge for the team. I think echo Chris's outstanding. I am so proud of this work that this team has done, the entire team. This looks amazing, right? This is something communities don't get too often to do this. So thank you for that. Just in the interest of time, I'll keep it a little bit shorter, but comments, I also love just all the future expansion, the versatility, your comment there of more public spaces that people can use kind of as needs are there. So I guess three questions I have, and you can answer now or in the future. One, just what additional or what security, and that might be in the next for the the design document phases. You know, what elements of security are you putting in? Two, are there changes you've made with COVID? And then three, were one of your stakeholders, community members in your groups, you know, with feedback of users of customers beyond, maybe I missed at the beginning. So those are my three questions. But thank you, thank you, thank you.
Maybe I can start with the the last question. No, we did not have a a community member as part of this 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 group. I imagine that we'll have ample opportunity for community comments during the design process and definitely before construction. And then Candy, I don't know if you want to address security or
Evan, if I could just jump in on the community input, I think we relied heavily on on the visioning process when we put a lot of these plans or when we talked through a lot of this. And so from that standpoint, there was a great deal of of community involvement. And I think the number one takeaway was that community space. And so that's you know, that's what you're seeing. That's that's kind of the result of what or what we tried to do here is offer that a community space, you know, right in the heart of town.
Thanks for that addition, Ryan. Go ahead.
Sure. So from a security standpoint, it may be easier. I don't know, Emma, if you're able to switch to the plan real quick. I don't know if that's a simple adjustment. Thank you. So we have started conversations of security, and I think it will get a little bit more specific as we go along. Can you, are you able to get all the way to the floor plan or is mine delayed? Okay, there we go. Thank you so much. Okay, that's perfect. So the plans for now, at the level that we're at here and the early stages, is the lobby space that cuts through that separates the public space from the private space. I call it private. It's just the way to say that the public's just not gaining access to that without somebody else with them. The two doors that lead into that space, they're both by restrooms. Those would actually be locked at all times with card reader access would be the plans at this point in time. Anyone who wants to get in those doors has to have card reader access or has to have an appointment with somebody who comes down and then actually escorts them into the building, which is similar to what's happened at the police station. There will be glass in those windows for interaction with the public. We may end up doing the bullet resistant wall construction that they did at the police station because the open offices, they're they're open. So we want to make sure those people are protected. And then the door that is just the employee entrance door, as well as the door to the exterior for the the soft break room, those also would be expected to have access controls and have those locked at all times so that only somebody with card reader access could get in. There will be some more detail going into security and different provisions for council chambers and the community room, but that's a lot of detail that we'll get into as we continue to develop the design.
Emma, if you roll to the site plan, I'll mention just a couple minor security aspects. I'm sure the comment was about the inside of the building, but we did consider security on the outside of the building. We've got ollards on the west side that would prevent a vehicle from accessing the doors and then strategically by placing benches and trees and things throughout the plaza. And we, you know, we do want to accommodate vehicular access, food trucks and planned vehicles, but those they just want to do something nefarious. We want to make sure we can slow them down. So we we have thought about that on the exterior.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Mayor?
Yes.
Echo the the positive comments tonight. It's it is nice to see that you know, space-wise, as Ryan was talking about, there's plenty of community space. The green spaces is a wonderful idea. I love the the aspect and the design that you have. I guess my my concern with that, having had experience in the Parks Department is upkeep and cost and expense. I see there are water fountains coming through the concrete there. Is that just for show or is that actually a feature? And then as we find ourselves in the middle of a small drought, there will be years with that that require watering and such of that. That's a lot of area to maintain on our Parks Department. Certainly, I think we'll share that concern with Ryan offline. So what can you just share a little bit more about, you know, how what's been designed into this for low maintenance upkeep with the water fountains, with the plantings and so?
Thanks for that. So so yes and no. We did show a fountain in there. We don't have that all figured out, but we, in the budget and the estimate that we came up with the projected cost, we did have an allowance for an amenity. And so we're, you know, that could be a water element, it could be something else. So we wanted to wanted to make sure we had a placeholder for that. So that that has not been fully considered. We are pretty pretty sure about the plant material and selections. We work really closely with the Parks Department. You have a great palette of plants that have you, we've narrowed in on over the years that do well in your climate and that environment. So I I think once established, you know, there there can be some significant watering upfront, but once established, it's a good palette of materials, plant materials. So I'm not I'm not concerned about the the long-term maintenance. I mean, nothing's maintenance-free by any means, but I think we've done a nice job in some of the other roundabouts and parklets to to narrow in and reduce the amount of maintenance necessary.
And then we're, as you look at that natural light, and I I shared the the thought that Chris had with those large windows on that south edge, were skylights considered as part of that?
Oh, yeah, we have discussed the possibility of skylights as well. And again, I think, you know, your comments are all very, very appropriate, and we will definitely take those into consideration as we continue to refine the design and try to find what is the best fit for the building and for the project. One of the challenges with skylights that we did discuss would be the future possibility of having solar panels. So we did want to make sure that we left some roof space available should the city wish to pursue that in the future. And the skylights would cut down on the available area for solar panels. So we did try to leave those to the corridor lobby space to try to bring natural light into that area and left the rest of the roof other than space for mechanical open for future solar panels.
Thank you, Mayor.
Um, Mary, if I if I may, I just want to
Please.
I just want to add in, you all kind of asked preliminary questions, but just looking at the concept of what you all came up with, it is, it definitely exceeded my expectations. I'm glad you all are doing this and not me. But it looks very good and as an initial plan for it. And I I think it exceeds the expectations right now, and it's very thoughtful for, you know, our community growing and the potential of adding more employees and so forth in here and allowing space to grow. And so, yeah, I I'm pleased with what you all have presented tonight, and I'm definitely looking forward to having a a civic campus and eventually seeing the finished project.
Anyone else? Brian?
I'll just like quadrado, ditto everybody and stuff. I really actually liked that plaza idea, though. I really liked that space and and being able to do some stuff. And I understand that, you know, the the building you know, exterior stuff will probably change over time, but it looks like there's a very good layout for the staff, and it sounds like they think it'll work pretty good for them for efficiency and stuff. And the other things will sort out over time, but I like the, you know, where this parking, but I really like that plaza. I think that really will lend itself in the future to having some cool events.
Anything else from anybody else? Kevin, thank you and your entire team for the work that they've done to this point. Like I said, I think everybody's very, very pleased as far as this concept is concerned. And as time goes on, modifications will be made, but, and we'll see how the cost shakes out and some things that we can add or maybe may have to subtract. So again, very nice work, folk. Very nice work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, we'll go ahead into our regular session. We have the consent agenda. Is there anything within those items that you want to pull out and talk about first? If not, a motion to approve consent agenda be in order?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Final discussion of questions. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Kevin, back to you for engineer report.
Okay, thank you. My report's pretty short tonight. Rancho Way Phase Five project, so the phase one has been completed and the traffic was shifted to the west between Zeller and Fairview. And PCI started work on phase two yesterday. And this is planned for about six to eight weeks before they'll shift again to proceed with phase three. The pool heater replacement project, we sent Tricon the notice of award and contract. And we were just today, I think, trying to finalize the, the date for the pre-construction meeting, but that'll be scheduled for very soon. And then there's two more, the Pervigene Road Trail Project, public hearings tonight. And next Tuesday, 10 a.m., that's when the bids are due. So, and then the Centennial Loop Road Project, the, that's running about one meeting behind the Pervigene Road Trail. So we're looking at awarding a contract for that one on July 27th. But our bid documents are due on this Friday. That's all I have unless you guys have questions.
Additional items for Kevin? Thank you. Ryan?
Very brief report for me tonight. Oops, I see I raised my hand on my screen. I don't know what I did there. There we go. Apologies. Just wanted to provide a quick update on the project Better Together. They hosted an event last week that had a good turnout. This is the group that's been working closely since the start of the pandemic. That includes the Business Alliance and the quarter, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Think Iowa City, Icade in the downtown district. And they are going to be at our next meeting, July 13th, to present an update to the city council and the next steps in, in their venture. So more to come from that group in July. That's what I have for the night.
Any questions for Ryan? Okay, mayor's report, the only thing that I really have to report. I don't know about some of you, but I've been getting a number of calls and contacts in regards to the situation by Walgreen, where we have a couple with a young child, might as well say it, panhandling. Have any of you had additional contacts and people in regards to this?
Yeah, we had pretty extensive conversation here in our Facebook group over here.
Was there any conclusion as far as things that they were suggesting that would like to be seen done?
No, no one made any comments. I had reached out to Chief Enigma, actually, to get her guidance before I made any public comment on Facebook. First of all, to ask if they had had interaction with this family, and she said they had, and that they had offered every service that was available in our community, pantry, transportation. And, and as you indicated a moment ago, Mayor, they weren't not interested in services and helping. They were just panhandling. So I think once that kind of became known, the idea and the thoughts of, you know, how to do anything or to assist in that way kind of became moot because that's just not what they were, what they were interested in doing.
Okay.
That was my experience as well, Mayor. Multiple individuals that contacted me, assisted and attempted to assist in ways of gift cards, baby items, diapers and other things. And unfortunately, when they were approached, they were asked to return them in favor of cash. So that was the situation that was reported to me.
That seems to be a consistent comment. Anyone else? Well?
Mayor, I would just, Mayor, I would just say, I would say I, I appreciate the outreach from staff from our community in the way that they were assisting the family. And that is North Liberty, and that's what we know North Liberty to be. And we don't want to keep people from, from doing that, from assisting folks in need. In that particular instance, you know, unfortunately, it, it just wasn't able to help. So thank you to everyone that reached out and pulled at their heartstrings and, and did what you could. So we really appreciate that.
Okay, we'll just keep monitoring the situation and see what occurs. Next item on the agenda is the Forever Green Road Trail Project. Now's the time for a public hearing regarding proposed plans, specifications, estimated cost and form of contract for the Forever Green Road Trail Project. Anyone online wishing to speak in regards to that project? Anyone online wishing to speak in regards to that project? Have we had any contact from the public in regards to that project, please?
None have been received in my office.
Okay, call the public hearing to a close. This will be resolution number 2021-54. Resolution approving and confirming plans, specifications, estimate the cost for the Forever Green Road Trail Project. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
They moved.
I will second that.
Moved, seconded?
What?
Discussion?
Sorry, go ahead, Mayor.
Well, I think it was like second, second and a half, so Tracy will figure it out. So Tracy, take a roll.
Wason?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. Next one, resolution number 2021-55. A resolution approving the purchase of a temporary construction easement by the City of North Liberty for the Forever Green Road Trail Project. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion or questions? Tracy?
Hoffman?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. Now we're on the ag experience ordinance. Mr. Rusnick, can you give us a brief description of what is trying to be achieved?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Less, a little less than a year ago, but it's been a long time. Ryan had challenged me with an opportunity to collaborate with the colonies to develop an agricultural tourism or experience, because I like to be a little different. Ordinance, you know, in order to see if they'd be willing to come into the city of North Liberty. Initial meetings went very well, and they indicated that we could come to kind of a mutual agreement with respect to some things they're looking in the ordinance and, and maintaining some protections for the city that they'd be willing to do that. So I collaborated with Dean and Katie Colony over this past year. And, and what you see in front of you is, is the result of it. An agricultural experience would be limited to the ID district, which they would be zoned if they were annexed into the city. And it would need to be approved as a conditional use. So that would have to be approved by the Board of Adjustment. We didn't create a separate agriculture experience ordinance because we don't have agricultural zoning in the city, and we need to make sure we are maintaining consistency with our long-range plan. So this is why this was created. Also took the opportunity to clean up some items in the ID zoning itself and kind of moving the overall zoning ordinance to, to kind of where I envisioned it to be. Lastly, I also met with the North Liberty Food, Community Food Pantry, and they ran into an issue with doing a small extension into a separate building. We worked with them that, that we thought there'd be an opportunity for a minor fix. And so we did modify some language slightly. We also discussed that if they're looking to expand further than this, they would probably need to be talking about a, a more of a retail or commercial location. So those conversations are ongoing, and they are in favor of that change as well. And then the majority of the change comes with the agricultural experience language itself. So like I said, I, I think, I think it's an in-win situation for the city and colonies. We, we view them as a North Liberty community asset, even though they're technically in Johnson County. The only other thing I'd like to add is that the planning commission did review this on January 1st and unanimously recommended approval. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Now's the time for a public hearing regarding proposed ag experience ordinance amendment. Anyone on the program, Katie, that would like to make comment?
Uh, yeah, I guess that's me. You know, I sent an email to everybody, kind of giving our, our point of view and kind of the positives that have come out of it, the couple of things that we still kind of have to shake through a little bit. But otherwise, we've been very happy with, with working with this. It's obviously been something that's come, kind of come along for a long time. And with the city plans, long-range plans, you know, we know what's kind of there. But now hopefully we've got, we feel like we've got just a lot more support and welcoming to be here and, and working with, with somebody versus always feeling like we're working against somebody. So if anybody's got any other questions, we're, Dean and I both are here to answer anything.
Okay, don't hear any questions. Anyone else online wishing to speak in regards to this? Kayla?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you again for squeezing us into, to some of these amendment changes. And it was great to meet with Ryan and show him the small space that we're looking at, opening the community closets. It'll be a full-scale clothing closet, and we're really excited to be able to serve the community in that capacity. As you know, everything is growing, and the need for clothing has been growing pretty significantly since the pandemic. So we'll see you at the next two meetings, and hopefully we can get that amendment made. And as Ryan mentioned, we're also looking at expanding, but we'll have a much more detailed plan of what that would include and kind of looking at more retail space if, if that need is there. So thank you.
You're welcome. Any other person online wishing to make comment? Do we receive any written comments from anyone?
No.
Okay, with no other comments being received, we call the public hearing to a closed. So this will be the first consideration of ordinance number 2021-12. Ordinance amending section 16701 Code of Ordinances, North Liberty, Iowa, entitled definitions, by amending definitions of agriculture, food pantry and livestock, by adding the definitions agricultural experience, animal confinement operations, and by deleting the definitions farm, farm animals and farming. Amending sections 168.01 Code of Ordinances, North Liberty, Iowa, entitled ID Zone Interim Development District, by adding, amending and/or deleting certain uses in table 168.01A, entitled ID Zone Uses, by adding, amending and/or deleting certain uses in table 168.01B, entitled ID Zone Bulk Regulations, and by amending off-street parking regulations by deleting stockyard operation license required and kennel license required, and amending signs regulations, amending 169.06, entitled location of accessory buildings and uses, by amending food pantry regulations, and amending chapter 170, entitled special use regulations, and creating section 170.07, entitled agricultural experience and associated use regulations. Anyone wish to establish the first consideration?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Thank you. Any final discussion or questions?
Mayor, if I could?
Please.
So by that extremely lengthy ordinance, I think briefly shows the work that Russ and Grant and the rest of the team have put into this, the flexibility that the city has shown to make the colony property, continue it as a destination. It is, you know, one of those unique things that is North Liberty. We have been looking, you know, for a long time of what uniquely is North Liberty, and we're, we're continuing to search with that. But the colonies and the, the colony farms have been here the entire time. So thank you to city for that flexibility, for the work, to the colonies for the time that they've put in. I had a great conversation with them last evening, just in due diligence to what is occurring with this. And they had a lot of positive things to say with the interaction with staff. And I'm, I'm excited that this consideration is here and that we'll be seeing them incorporating, at least seeing a vote at council on incorporation into the city coming soon. So thank you to everyone.
Any other comments or question? Tracy, take a roll.
Harrington?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
First consideration passes five affirmative, none opposed. Hope Evangelical Church site plan, staff and planning commission recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just share my screen really quickly. Let's see. Get to the right one. Okay, zoning is residential and compliant. I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on this, but essentially we're taking a gravel parking lot and, and bringing it all into compliance with city code, which we really appreciate. So entire parking lot would be paved. There would be stormwater detention to treat the stormwater and, and certain portions of sidewalks will be replaced. So this is a great one, especially since we're going to be doing improvements to Dubuque Street in the area. This essentially brings this site into compliance with city code. So as you mentioned, planning commission recommend approval, the city staff does as well.
Any questions for Ryan? Applicant presentation?
Hi, John Marner with the MMS Consultants, representing the applicant. I'm available for any questions. I think Ryan covered everything that applies to the site. I'll point out quickly that it's, it's planned to put the paving in in two phases. The first phase would meet both the city requirements and all the current applicant's current needs. And then the phase two would be an opportunity to expand over time as the, as it's necessary. And then the other intent is to try to coordinate the efforts for the entrance reconstruction on the north entrance with the, with the improvements that the city has planned. I know there's some work being done on the south entrance to go into Frog Hollow as well. So we'd want to coordinate those efforts and, and the construction to make everything run smoothly as possible.
Questions for John?
Mayor, I do have one.
Yes, please.
Chris, go ahead.
You're good, Brent. Go ahead.
Okay, I had asked staff about the retention basin there along Front Street.
Okay, I had asked staff about the retention basin there along Front Street. I know that those are necessary evils. My question was that that basin itself, was it similar to what is next to the ballpark at Penn Meadows? Not Penn Meadows, Penn Elementary, and I was told it is very similar. I'm not fond of that. I think it's unsightly and frankly, it's ugly. It's a it's a ditch with gravel runways to open, you know, open cone cylinders, concrete cylinders, and it's just unsightly. Is there is there something different that can be done here? Plantings along Front Street, something to soften what will really be unsightly at the end of a concrete driveway?
Right now, it would be it would be turf. I'm somewhat familiar with the area you're referring to. So right now it would be turf grass that would be available to be, you know, the opportunity would be to mow it. Ryan, I don't know if you can pan down to either the landscape plan or to the grading portion of it. Oh, that's far enough. So there's nothing planned along 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 the frontage road. There is some additional landscaping and some trees that are planted next to the parking lot between the parking and the detention area. Again, the intent would be to make this an area that can be easily mowed and maintained. I know the church specifically had concerns about providing detention and some shared some of the same concerns that you did. That they wanted to make sure it was easy to be maintained and attractive and didn't cause any concerns for the neighbor immediately to the north and and for visibility and and what it looked like from the front street. So I I think, again, every opportunity was made to put a plan in place that would be easily maintained and and would look attractive, that are as attractive as possible.
Right, and you know, we we've seen these, again, we've seen these pop up. There's one similar at Heritage Christian School. It's wet some of the year, that's what it's designed to do for runoff. I get that. And then you get cattails growing and then you get grass that can't be mowed because it's standing in water and it just becomes unsightly. So, you know, long term, as a city, I guess my my challenge to Russ and and as we look at these and requiring these, can we give some guidance to make these things less unsightly? I know that they're needed, I'm not saying that they're not, but what we've done in the past just has not worked.
If I could jump in here a little bit too, Brent. John, since you're on the line, is it possible would the would the church be willing to put some landscaping in, trees and landscaping along the north front street corridor and and between theirs and the property owner to the north? And maybe some like the entrance drive to soften it up and and make it look better?
I could talk to him about it, as you know, it's, you know, churches tend to be tied a little more to fundraising for projects of this type of nature. So it's it's less a development, more so as a fundraising objective. But I can I can certainly mention that to him again. They state they shared a lot of the same concerns, so the specifically the idea about certain times a year, whether it would be able to be mowed consistently, whether it's always going to be standing water. It was designed, it's a fairly shallow tri bottom detention basin. There's not a lot of Kevin, I think, can verify this or confirm this. There's not a lot of drainage area that's going to this particular site. It's a smaller site, I think comparatively to the Penn Street or the the Penn Meadows Park and and Heritage Christian. Again, I'm not familiar with the overall drainage areas that those would those would encompass, but this, I believe, is a smaller area. The southeast corner of the site does drain to the southeast now. And and that drainage pattern is is to remain. It goes into an existing storm sewer system that's along the common access road that it's shared with Frog Hollow.
Yeah, but it is relatively small. I think the main concern is that it's right up against North Front Street where we have, you know, a fair amount of traffic and people are going to see that without any kind of landscaping or trees to help buffer that.
Sure, again, I can I can mention it to him and, you know, see, I, as I said, it's one of their primary concerns is is they want to be a good neighbor in this neighborhood, both to the to the city and also to their neighbor immediately to the north. So they they want to try to do things, something that's the city could be pleased with and and that the neighbor to the north can be pleased with as well. So I'd be happy to mention it to him. I know there's been some discussion with the sidewalk to possibilities to possibly improve that that additional stretch of sidewalk. I will add, there's a utility easement as part of the Front Street Improvement Project. There's a additional utility easement that's been requested by the utility companies for 15 foot across this property, so that restricts our ability to to do too much or to do as much with plantings along Front Street because there they have planned utilities to go in as part of those redevelopment, this redevelopment of the Front Street area. But again, I can I can raise those questions and and certainly see if they're willing to do so.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mayor, just my questions were about the detention pond also lightly on what Brent had asked about. But John, is this detention pond going to be part of phase one? I assume that it is.
Yep, yep, it's part of phase one. Okay, it covers the necessary improvements for phase two as well, but it's it's would be constructed as part of the phase one improvements.
All right, thank you. And the other, it's kind of a question, kind of a comment. By by nature, these detention ponds need to be near the stormwater stormwater pipe. So moving this into another part of the property just moves it further away from the stormwater line that's typically under the street or near the street. And that would add an extra expense if this is moved further back into the property, I would assume. Is that correct?
It would, and and one of the other goals of the of the city stormwater stormwater policy is to try to maintain general drainage areas. So moving it to the, say, to the eastern portion of the site or the northeastern portion of the site and trying to get the stormwater in that direction isn't consistent with where the water goes currently flows. Currently, the water tends to flow towards the northwest and then towards the south, south and southwest, as I had mentioned. So we place the detention area to accommodate that. And then, as you stated, we have to, part of this, part of the improvements for this requires extending a storm sewer along a small portion of the north northern neighbor's property to tie into the existing storm sewer that's that's along Front Street.
Great, thanks, John. A little bit of knowledge that's gained every single one of these meetings.
Any other questions or comments? John, thank you for your time. Now you have resolution number 2021-56. Resolution approving the development site plan for 420 North Front Street Hope Evangelical Church, North Liberty, Iowa. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Final discussion or questions? Tracy, please.
Wason?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. Next item, fiscal year 2122 wages. This will be resolution number 212021-57. Resolution authorizing salaries and hourly wages for city employees for the fiscal year of July 1st, 2021 to June 30, 2022. Anyone wish to establish that pay resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion or questions? Tracy, please.
Wason?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. Next item, Dubuque Street project. This will be resolution number 2021-58. This will be a resolution approving the purchase of temporary construction easements, permanent drainage easement and right of way by the city of North Liberty for the Dubuque Street Phase One project. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Discussion or questions? Please take roll.
Wason?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
That resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. The second resolution is 2021-59. A resolution approving the underground utility easements between the city of North Liberty and Interstate Power and Light Company and Q West Corporation. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion or question? Tracy?
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
That resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. Red Door Properties Staff and Planning Commission Recommendations. Mr. Rosnick?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Let me share my screen again. So this is the overall parcel. There is a proposal to subdivide that into the smaller lot, which you see. So that's why we have a preliminary plat, final plat in front of you as well as a site plan. So this smaller lot is where the scooters drive through coffee would be located. It's commercial, we zoned and and commercial on the future landings map, so there's no issues there. Pretty basic site plan has one way in, one way out, loops around to the drive through. It's primarily, I think, it might be only a drive through business. So they they've attempted to show the number of stacking vehicles here. We did have come up at planning commission meeting about the possibility of congestion into Penn Street. Unfortunately, we do not have anything in city ordinances that require a minimum amount of stacking based on the use. I am looking at doing some amendments to the off street parking ordinance. So I think that's something we could look at when we do that, because that'd be appropriately placed in the off street parking standards. A couple of things that were provided was a pedestrian walkway to Penn Court as well as an outdoor seating area. And so a very small building, so there are some design challenges with such a small building. I don't know if anyone's been in Iowa City, but they opened the scooters down there recently. And the city ordinances with respect to design that the city has shows you how much more we're able to get in the city. This was just kind of paneling and but we're able to get masonry here. City staff also asked for additional glazing, which was provided, and therefore we have the additional onings as well. So able to, I think, do the best to enhance what essentially a rectangular box. Just go back to the landscaping plan, very well landscaped, especially along our Penn Street frontage. So the planning commission recommended approval. There was two findings. And they recommended approval of the request subject to these two conditions. And the plans have been updated to reflect these conditions. So with that, staff recommends approval as well. Thank you.
Applicants' presentation?
Thank you, John Marner with MMS Consultants again. Speaking on behalf of the applicant, and I know the applicant, Mark Holt Camp is also on and he'll be available to speak if if requested when I'm finished, if there's any questions. Ryan, I think, covered most of the topics as he alluded to. We tried to beef up and upgrade the landscaping along the Penn Street corridor to make that attractive view from from that main entryway into the city of North Liberty. Added the additional masonry on the front of the on the south facing side of scooters and around each each the east and west side. At this particular location, while scooters is primarily a drive through, that's their primary focus. This particular location does have a mobile order walk up location. A patio would service that that window, walk up window as well. Ryan talked about the stacking spaces. There's eight shown on the plan. There's an additional room for another two spaces within that one lane drive through aisle right underneath the hype or the hype bar in the corner, so that's 10. And there's room for another space beyond that that would that would not impact any of the parking stalls. So there's room for 11 stacking spaces. Mark can discuss this a little bit more if 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 you have any further questions. But scooters primarily focuses on a business model that wants to expedite expedite the service as quickly as possible. They focus more on a quick service drive through. They don't have, as I mentioned, they don't have the inside walk up. So they're able to focus exclusively towards the towards the drive up aspect and they're because of that, they're able to process and move customers through at a quicker, much quicker rate than other drive through coffee establishments. Again, I'm available for any other questions if there are any.
Mayor, yeah, Mayor, sorry, I got a couple, or just one. John or Mark, can you tell me what is what's planned for the future to the north of the Scooters Coffee in this lot?
I'm not sure if Mark wants to answer that. There there's an opportunity both to, it would meet a size requirement if the if there was an opportunity if it made sense to split that off into its own lot in the future. Beyond that, I'm not aware of any any current plans that Mark Mayor may not have all, it looks like he's available, I'll let him speak to that if he.
This is Mark. Yeah, I do not have any plans for that at this time.
All right, thank you. My my biggest concern is going to be parking. And as this future lot is developed, the spaces that are here in the scooters lot are if you split this lot in half, those there next to that number two that we're looking at look like they would be in that portion of the lot. So yeah, there you go. Whatever is going to go in there, I would anticipate it's going to be another building of size similar to scooters. And you quite literally may not have imagined this yet. In that case, is there any reason why this space might not be expanded for any additional parking? One of the comments that our council had was about contractors, those that may want to swing by but that are pulling something, having space in there. Is there a way to accommodate more parking than on this lot at scooters that we're talking about? That might be used in the future on Lot Two?
I will, I will say that there is room to, part of this of this concept allows for a drive aisle to extend north from where the one lane drive aisle is now to enter into the drive through lane. Sorry, I had a pop up. There's an opportunity to extend a drive aisle up and to the north to tie back into Lineage or Lane. Actually, as it enters the drive through lane, Ryan, I'm not sure if you can. So we could wrap the perimeter with a with a drive aisle and then that would allow us to provide additional parking where that too is located. And again, it depends on how that, you know, what, how the rest of that lot wants to develop. There's a lot of different options. We did take a brief look at that, or at least I took a brief look at some different options to try to lay out that, lay that concept out where those spaces that are next to the two could be utilized as either shared parking or or completely separate from the rest of the development to the north. And as far as the the contractors, again, it's a primarily drive through model. So the objective would be they're not, they're not necessarily going to drive or pull up and park. They would be driving through the site to to pick up their coffee. Mark, I'm not, I'm not sure what their typical customer traffic is on a regular basis. You might be able to speak to that a little bit more.
Yeah, typically, most contractors, if they're in a large pickup truck or anything like that or even trailers, we can get them through the drive through line. Really, the only thing we can accommodate would be like a semi. And a lot of times what we'll have is semis, we'll find parking somewhere close by, but I don't know if we're going to. somewhere close by, but I don't know if we're going to be able to get a semi through there no matter what.
Okay, thanks. And I think the last question I'll ask is, this drawing that we're looking at is just, it's just a, you know, it's a one-dimensional drawing here. We're not talking about a drive-through vein that looks like a, like a water ride at Adventure Land. We're looking for some space where if you do have a trailer, you've got an opportunity to pull it through here as well.
Yes, it's a pretty flat site, so there's, there's not a lot of grade change from the, from the south into the north. The site drains, the way the site's designed is to drain from the south towards the north. There's a pair of intakes there, just, just immediately off the entrance on the north side of the entrance off of Penn Court. But it's not a lot of elevation change, so it's fairly flat. There's an opportunity, as Mark said, for those trailers, and the radiuses are, are large enough that the trailers, or the trucks with the trailers can get through the site.
Perfect. That's all my questions. Thank you, guys.
Other questions?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
More just a comment. Russ already addressed it, but that we don't have anything within the city per se written, but I'm just concerned with the increased traffic coming out there. So I know it meets the requirements, but that's just going to get busier and busier, so I just want to publicly say that.
Yeah, I, I think I've mentioned, or at least, you know, if there's actually standing or congestion in public street, that is something we will address, and we will work with property art, because you know, that, although city ordinances, we can't compel them to provide additional stacking or looping it around. If they're standing or stopping in public streets, that, that is something we can address.
I will add, in addition to the eleven lots I mentioned, without impacting the parking, there would be an opportunity for another four cars to stack within the site before they would, before they would get back on Penn Court, so you'd have a maximum of fifteen cars that could stack on the site without ever impacting Penn Court.
Anything else? What you have is Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-One Dash Sixty. A resolution approving the preliminary plat and final plat for Progress Park, Part Twelve, North Liberty, Iowa. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, final discussion of questions? Tracy, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Pollack?
Aye.
Wayson?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. Next is Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-One Dash Sixty-One. A resolution approving the development site plan for Lot Two, Progress Park, Part Six, Scooters Coffee, North Liberty, Iowa. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Seconded. It's been seconded. Brian, did I hear you?
Yep.
Thank you. Any other final questions? Tracy, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrington?
We'll come back to her. Go ahead, please.
Pollack?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Wayson?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. Next item is our livestock ordinance discussion, possible action regarding mayor's veto of ordinance number Twenty Twenty Dash Zero Six, da-da-da-da-da. What is your feelings, or what would you like to touch on?
So Mayor, can I speak up here just for procedural?
Yes.
Well, that's okay, thank you. What, what we have here tonight is, is an option that's been, that's been put forward on the agenda to override the mayor's veto of, of the livestock ordinance amendment that was, that was mentioned. This process does not allow for amendments. And so, you can, you, the council has the option, if it so chooses, to make a motion to override that veto. That motion would need to be done by roll call and would have, and would only be able to carry if we had two-thirds or four-fifths in our case of a vote. That vote would then ratify, have the effect of ratifying the ordinance as was previously passed. And, and that's, that's the only thing that, that that vote, in particular, can be about. If there is additional discussion that you want to have about possible amendments or whatever, that would have to be done on a separate vote, and couldn't be included in the, in the consideration of the whether or not to, the council wishes to override a veto. I'll, I can answer additional questions, but that's as straightforward as I can make it.
Thanks, Grant.
So Grant, procedural question. If, if the motion is made, does it need a second?
Yep, all motions need to be seconded, and then you can have a discussion. And then, once the, the motion is seconded, you can have, you can have a roll, but there's really no motion to, you can decide to discount or discard the motion, motion to table, which is effectively would be a motion to kill. Because this is, there's only one meeting that falls within thirty days of the veto, and this is it. So this is, this is the only chance to do that if the council wishes to do that.
So then if a vote was had and a motion to override carries, then would there be able to be discussion of amendments or additions to the previously stated ordinance?
Certainly, council can, can put forward any discussion that you want. That might be something that would, that would be technically you would want to put into business later, but, but this is, this, this item agenda is for the discussion of the veto. If you would like to give direction to staff for additional amendments or something like that, that you'd want to consider at a future meeting, we can't take action on it tonight because it wasn't on the agenda, right? But you would be able to give us direction on what you want to see, and we would put something together for you to talk about at our next meeting on July thirteenth.
Thank you.
So Grant, can I make sure I understand? So, as, to do things, if we override the veto, then what has already been done is, becomes the, the law, and then if we want to change it, it's something that we've already done, we'll just go through the same process like we would normally for amending an ordinance?
Yeah, we would, we would publish notice in the newspaper what the proposed changes are. And there would be a public hearing, and then you can have three, up to three readings. It doesn't, you don't have to. You can make a motion by four-fifths vote to, to skip the first two readings and go straight to a final reading if you need to. But that, it would be done just like any other ordinance amendment, just like what we've already done tonight, for instance, right?
Okay.
Is that, is that responsive?
I think so. I'm just trying to, I think there's probably a few things that people would like to tweak a little bit, and it just, if, if we do, yeah, it, it may be faster to, well, I don't know. I'm just trying to figure out the fastest way to maybe get through things, so.
I will steer clear of any comment on that. I have no opinion, sir.
So Mayor, can I ask a question of you?
Sure.
Okay, so, I guess my, my position, I, I've disagreed with you on the ten-foot setback. I think that seeing fences inside of fences is unsightly, so that, that's where, where I have a divergence with you. However, you, you did pique my interest. I, I take a mayoral veto seriously. It's not something that's used very often. It's something that you obviously were passionate about. My extensive experience in HOAs here in town, what is your concern specifically with the HOA method?
In regards to the HOA, to me, the, the way that was done or handled before almost allowed the process for a person to go ahead within an HOA without really notifying the HOA and proceed with action to go ahead and put in a facility. In one particular instance, then, once it was recognized, the people in the HOA came back and negotiated an agreement with the parties involved. The thing is, why do we have to go ahead and do it that way when we, when we can deal with the problem ahead of times as a preventative measure instead of a confronted measure on the back end? So that has been the primary reason on that one.
You mean by allowing the, by requiring written permission from the HOA prior to the permitting of allowance? Is that what you're, is that what you mean?
Yes.
So through, through my, through my experience, there's, there's really two main HOAs in our town. There are those that are robust and involved, and there are those that exist on paper only. And they're two very different HOA experiences, management styles. Both have their challenges, and I, I understand what you're, what you're getting at, and I think that you would get that approval and maybe proactive measure from the involved robust HOAs, but from the others, I don't believe that you would. And it's, you know, it, it's like putting on the wrong shingle color, or putting up a shed, or, you know, other things that occur in HOAs all of the time. It's up to those HOAs and, you know, and, and they're, the way that they manage them to, to manage their own neighborhoods in that way, and that's, you know, we, I, I did that for years. It's not fun, for sure. But it does exist. Those are my comments on that. I appreciate the, the explanation on those, those items. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
So, I'm not a hundred percent sure that it's the city's, I guess, responsibility to enforce the homeowner association rules. That's the only thing I, I just have some concern about. You know, how are we supposed to know, you know, what homeowner association lets have, you know, the chickens and which ones don't? And it does put a lot of, you know, problem, or it, it puts the staff in the middle of trying to sort some of that out, which is why, you know, my intent would be, you know, if the person wants to have a chicken coop and they come and get a permit, and then the homeowner association said, hey, this person, we don't allow this, and then we would just pull the permit. And then, then that's the way it's done, but this, you know, trying to get us to decide whether or not that is indeed valid from the homeowners association, you know, that's what my intent would be, to try and keep the city out of the upfront of it, but at the end of it, if they can say, hey, these isn't allowed, then we just say, then your permit is not valid any longer. And then that would be back to this homeowner association to, you know, work out if they're, whatever their process is.
Exactly, but the thing is, I don't want the individual to go to the expense of building a coop and fence and chickens, and all of a sudden then things are jerked from, and then they've gone to a lot of unnecessary expense.
Yeah, well, I think that would be hoop them to look into that before they go to that expense, so.
Exactly.
So Mayor, may I ask you a question too?
Sure.
Just following that last thought there, then, you think your recommendation to veto would help the individuals who would be constructing the chicken coop then versus what we had previously approved? Is that correct?
Okay, I'm not quite following you.
Sorry, how do you think that by vetoing, it helps the individuals who might be constructing having the chickens in their backyard versus having the HOAs oversee it?
Well, the particular thing comes back to the way I see it is, I'm trying to give protection to HOAs as well as to the individual that would like to have chickens, makes a mistake, puts in the expense, and then has to get rid of them. I think that's unfair to them as well. But the thing is, is like on an application, do you belong to an HOA? Yes, no. If you don't, fine. If, if you do, and the knowledge, no, and the HOA finds out about it, then, you know, then you're in a big brouhaha again, which could have been very easily, you know, I think avoided.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Better helps me think through it. Thank you.
I think the other issue was the free-range aspect. And it's my understanding, you, Mayor, that you wouldn't want them to be able to get to the property line. Is that?
That is correct.
And stuff, so, and I, I couldn't, I mean, people have various arguments about that, but it was just basically came down to, I don't like it, and so I couldn't see a particularly a good reason other than that to, to not let them ru-run to the, in, on the person's property, so I would probably be just rather leave that the way it was. The homeowner association, I'm not a hundred percent sold on. So I don't know how other people feel about that other issue, so.
I'll just chime in here real quick. I think the point on the fences, we did spend quite a bit of time, I think, in our three discussions about this. If I have a memory of this, it's, it was a lot about that. And I think a few commenters that we've received emails from in the last day or two kind of point that out, and Brian, you alluded to it here a moment ago, when you've got a, a neighbor with a dog or a chicken or what have you in there, they're all going to kind of act the same. Your, your pet is going to act the same to whatever is beyond their fences. I, I think it's unsightly to have a ten-foot, a ten-foot buffer and then put another fence inside of a person's yard. I think it just looks worse. From things, everything that I've read, chickens are good for the environment, they're good for that person's backyard, and, and indirectly, they're going to be good for their neighbors' yards as well. Eating ticks and insects that could carry disease. The waste, anything that comes off of a chicken is better for the, better for the ground than our dogs and cats will put on the ground out there. Anything that would happen making it into a neighbor's property would be significantly less than what a, what a dog would do as well as marking their territory, so chickens just don't operate in that way. I, I think Annie and Brian and Brent's question about the HOA, not completely satisfied that your suggestion is going to solve that. I think Brett kind of hit it on the point there. He was soft in, in saying it and very diplomatic in his description of HOAs in North Liberty. We don't have an active one to, to the extent that if something like that were required, we wouldn't even know who to ask to get to sign off on that permit. Whereas in Brent's neighborhood, he would. He would know right who to go to, and you would know whether it was allowed, most likely, as you're doing your investigating. I think the onus is on the property owner to construct the, the coop or not, and if they did something and it turns out that they shouldn't have, that's, that's their fault. I had one more point, but I'll, I'll come, I guess I'll come back to it. No, I'll leave it with that.
No, Mayor, I think, I'm I'm glad this group is taking the veto seriously, and it's, it's had additional conversation and thought, and additional time and conversation with constituents through email. Time and conversation with constituents through email, through phone calls that I've had, and I know that others have. So I'm appreciative of that. What I see is that. There's some common ground, but there's also room for some improvement. I guess at this point, because of that, I think I would be in favor of, of an override tonight with a relook. At, you know, what the group consensus is for. A separate vote of amendments, whether it's the, the free range issue on its own, whether it's the. You know, I, I brought up the coop distance from a house for fire safety reasons or other things. But I, I obviously can't speak for the group, but. You know, I think that's where I stand. I, I think that we're all willing to, to make some sacrifices here. And get it right. I know we don't want to drag it out. Don't want to drag it out, but I, I think that there's some room for improvement.
See, the thing is, I think. That's not totally understood. Is that, that the council's been so together on things that have gone down the line. You know, it seemed like lockstep passive thing. The thing is, you know, you do actions with what you believe is your belief. I have to look at the actions of what I, what my beliefs are. They're actually two separate things. And so the thing is, by doing this, it just gives me an additional vehicle to come back to you and to say. Well, maybe we need to think about this just a little bit more. And maybe we did something that maybe we shouldn't have or need to modify. The thing is, it is not a punitive measure, not at all. But there's things that I've gone by five all in the past that. Do you really want to consider this? Because when I was seeing past votes on the amendments, some of those votes were not that strong. You know, and so that, that goes into the total deliberations too. Then in looking at other community ordinances, they're, they're basically what we had to begin with. As far as distances and things from house expenses, et cetera, and so. That's where I'm coming from, folks. And so I depend on you to, you know. You override it, should override it, if you feel now that there should be some amendments in the future, fine, I'm, I'm okay with that.
So Mayor, if I could, I, I think that. We all appreciate your thought on that. And actually, you know, for me, we've worked together for a long time. And I really respect your opinion on things, so if you say something, you know, I'm going to listen. And, but I'm going to think about it and I'll make up my own mind and stuff, so. But, you know, I do appreciate you putting your thought into this as well, and, and, you know, by no means do we want to put you in a position that we're kind of like, oh, well. You know, we're, we don't like what you did.
Yeah, but sitting on the council table. You have the freedom to interject and really interact.
Yeah.
When you're in this part of the table, that kind of changes that. Don't meddle with the council's affairs unless it's something really bad.
Yeah. And then the Zoom thing doesn't help. So Grant, could I ask you a question again?
Anything you like, sir.
So we have a permit process right now in place. Can we put a moratorium on new permits for a period of time?
No, not without a big to do here. I would need to look into the, what, what's involved in that. These permits are issued administratively without a lot of, there's not discretion in it. It's, it's you. Check these boxes, you get the permit as long as you, as long as you check the boxes. So as far as a moratorium, I would need to. I know that such things are sometimes possible that I would need to look into it. My, my, and I probably shouldn't just say straight up, no. But I will, I will, I will research that issue for you and, and come back to you with a thoughtful and brief memo on that topic. Is that, is that okay?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out the smartest way to do this.
So.
Just jump back in, sorry, Mayor. I'll just jump back in here with a, a couple more things. And Mayor, you said two things that I, I think are important, that you don't get to participate in the vote. I think I would agree with Brian in that having worked alongside of you, when you say something, even if I don't agree with it, it gets my attention. And it makes me think. And I think the same can be said for all of the counselors that have been actively part of this conversation over the last three meetings. And although the votes for amendments or how we move along in this process might not be strong. The process by which democracy goes on is through compromise. And I think by and large, the. Resolution or the ordinance that we're passing has, has the consensus of council. I think. The reasons for vetoing were many, and I think it, I think that's what's kind of throwing us in different directions right now, and. If we could have had your input, which I don't believe was ever excluded over the last three meetings. This would have been helpful and fruitful and, and welcome addition to that conversation. With that, I asked Russ this afternoon to confirm my math. We have six chicken permits in North Liberty, so. We've spent a great deal of time on something that will impact so few people in the city, so I would ask the council for. Make, I'll make the motion for first consideration to override this veto.
Motion made, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Tracy.
Smith.
Hi.
Hoffman.
Hi.
Pollock.
Nay.
Harrington.
Hi.
Wason.
Hi.
Override passes four affirmative, one opposed, ordinance goes in effect upon publication.
So Mayor.
Yes.
So if, if there's some. Maybe we can have a little bit of, if you can maybe. Send out what you think would be a way around that with the HOA part. That maybe we can put that into the, on July, whatever that meeting is, if we need to look into an amendment for the HOH notification. And see what we can come up with something with that, because I think that is a little, you know. Little bit, I think people have different views on that too, and it may just be something we can tweak quick.
Fair enough. I know the one, the original part of the staff's recommendations for the ordinance coming out. I had no problems with that. It was just all these, you know, minutes come afterwards. Anyway, you override it. We got it done. We'll work toward, you know, some compromises here in the future. Fair enough? All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Be back. Water rate amendment, third consideration of adoption of ordinance number 2021 dash zero nine. An ordinance amending chapter ninety-two point oh two entitled rates for service of municipal code in North Liberty. By adopting a new section ninety-two oh two to increase the charges for water used. Anyone wish to establish the third and final consideration?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Final discussion or question? Tracy, please.
Smith.
Hi.
Harrington.
Hi.
Okay.
Hoffman.
Hi.
Pollock.
Hi.
Wason.
Hi.
Third and final consideration passes five affirmative, none opposed. Position building rezoning request. This will be the third consideration of adoption of ordinance number twenty-two one dash ten. An ordinance amending chapter one sixty-seven of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances by amending the use regulations on property. Located on the west side of South Kansas Avenue. Approximately point two, three miles north of West River Green Road located in North Liberty, Iowa, to those set forth. In the municipal code for the O slash RP Office and Research Park District. Anyone wish to establish the third and final consideration?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Oh, that's nice. Thank you. Take roll.
Pollock.
Hi.
Harrington.
Hi.
Wason.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
Hoffman.
Hi.
Third and final consideration passes five affirmative, none opposed. Next item, Solomon Holdings LLC rezoning request. Third consideration and adoption of ordinance number twenty-two one dash eleven. An ordinance amending chapter one sixty-seven of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances. By amending the use regulations on property located on the west side of Community Drive. Approximately two hundred and forty feet south of West Penn Street located in North Liberty, Iowa. To those set forth in municipal code for the C two A P A D highway commercial district planned area development. Anyone wish to establish the third and final consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Final discussion or question? Take roll.
Hoffman.
Hi.
Harrington.
Hi.
Pollock.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
Wason.
Hi.
Third and final consideration passes five affirmative, none opposed. Next item. Hate crime ordinance discussion. Grant.
So I wanted to come back very quickly, if you don't mind, to the counsel Wason's question with respect to the moratorium that you asked about earlier. That would be, that would require an ordinance, it's something we could do if you wanted to put those in place. Speaking of ordinances, in your council pack tonight is a, a version of what North Liberty's version of Iowa City's. Hate crime ordinance might look like. This is lifted word for word from the Iowa City Code of Ordinances, and this is just provided as, by way of as example. In continuance of the, the discussion we had at our previous meeting. I think I, I had one question that was, that was sent to me beforehand, had to do with the, the difference between. A. A municipal hate crime ordinance, such as the one that sits before you now, and the Iowa code. Chapter seven twenty-nine A point two, and the, the key difference there are two. One, the Iowa code has, has to do with only four areas, and that's assault. Arson, criminal mischief, which is breaking property, and then trespass. Those are the four things that are covered under state code. Those, the. Municipal ordinance that would, that has some overlap with respect to trespass, that can also be a simple misdemeanor at the municipal level. Which is what we're allowed to prosecute, and it adds harassment in the third degree. That's the first instance of contacting someone. In a way that's intended to threaten, harass, or annoy. And, and in this case, having to do with, with one of their immutable characteristics. The state, the state law. And its counterparts. Have to do with enhancing sentencing penalties, so increasing a dollar range and increasing. A, a, a period of incarceration as a, as a possible punishment. Since we are capped at a certain dollar amount at the municipal level and a certain amount of incarceration at a municipal level. The, the way to enhance a penalty at the municipal level would be, in this case, to put in a minimum, a minimum penalty of, of. However many the dollars it is and a minimum number of days in jail based on the, the first or subsequent offense. But that's, that's the. The long and short of it, I'll do my best to answer any other questions.
So Mayor, my, my thought on this is, I, I mean. Look, obviously. No one wants to vote against a hate crime ordinance. We don't. We, we want to see that proactive. We want to support that kind of language. We want to. Make it known that we don't stand for that kind of thing in our community. Without question. The, the question. Really becomes the, the fiscal responsibility behind it. We're going to get an eight hundred and thirty-nine dollar fine and, and a week in jail, and it, it could put political pressure on staff. To, to, to form prosecution at a cost of tens of thousands of dollars. Is it fiscally responsible to do that? That, tho- those are the two points in, in my head with this. I, I want to support this ordinance, no doubt. But I also don't want to create a political climate that is, becomes. You know, forced upon staff to, to. To have to do this in, in certain circumstances, I guess. Does that make sense?
This, this is what I can share. I believe Grant explained before that. Though. One way that he will move forward with even trying to. Process any of this is if it, if it was a great chance of approving and, and he. I don't, I don't know if you're going to explain that again, Grant. The position in which we would have to definitely, I mean, that we could. Use this or you would move forward in, in processes.
So prosecutors have a slightly different, not different, but additional some ethical duties with respect to bringing charges, so we don't. Bring charges unless we think there's probable cause that, that the, that the underlying crime has actually happened, and so I would need to have. Someone to need to be able to show me evidence that this is more than harassment, more than, more than trespass, that it was based on these things. I don't need to think that I can prove it beyond a reasonable doubt. I need to think that I can, that, that the evidence is, is there where a reasonable jury could do, could, could find, come to that conclusion. I will. I, I, I couldn't say what I would do in any given circumstance, but there is, all prosecutors have, have some amount of discretion as to whether they bring charges and, and the ultimate. Goal on whether you prosecute someone to the fullest extent of the law or, or not. Whether you might offer a plea deal or reduce sentence or not bring charges at all is, is whether in your, in the prosecution's view. Doing, prosecuting that crime is, serves the interest of justice. And what, what a question that is, right? And, and I think you ask ten people, you get ten different answers, but so you, that's. That's what informs me and, and, and what I think. Is, is. The only intangible there. I mean, the, the facts will be there or they won't, and then whether this, is this right or not, I, I might. It's, it's silly to think that I wouldn't think about the consequences of, of what would happen for, for a charge, so if someone had a drug paraphernalia. Charge. But they were about to go to college and that's going to ruin their chances of college, college admission from having some sort of drug-related defense. I, I think that would weigh on my decision whether, whether that gets pleaded out or, or not, you know, it really depends if it's. Is this the second or third time this has happened? Is this, how serious was it? Was someone hurt? Those are all things that, that all factor into this, and there's, so there's no real rubric. Other than what I, other than what I've shared with you to the best of my ability. Counsel Harrington, does that, does that answer your question?
Brent, I thought you teed that up perfectly. I think that's the. Those were the two big questions in the room, and they had very different. They, they just came from very different places. uh, they 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 just came from very different places. Uh, Rakisha, I really appreciate you asking Grant uh to recap what he said at that last meeting. Uh, Grant, your your response was helpful and informative uh to us tonight. I really appreciate that.
I think when it comes down to finances, there is this, that possibility, those things could happen. I think we all agree with that. At the same time, I I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that to answer the question that may come up and then what process justice? You know, if that's the other part of the the equation on this one. And that's a tough one. But again, it's locking Grant into a, you know, situation. I mean, he's got to evaluate the case. If it's not there, it's not there.
Mayor, I appreciate your comment there. Thank you.
I just have some concern that you know, that, you know, and I understand that, you know, people, you know, once you you have somebody brings this forward, you you know, the, you know, your attorney has his his obligation based on the law and then their code of ethics and stuff, but I I think that it's just going to add a whole level of of other problems that's, I'm not sure that we are equipped and maybe not the best way to deal with uh things. Um, and I know that we have an expectation that people treat everyone equitably no matter what. And then that's you know, how we we expect that behavior. I'm not sure making another law that we most likely cannot use is going to help uh work on that. I think it does may send a statement, but I think maybe we can send another another way to do that that doesn't uh cause additional uh issues. Um, I did look on the twenty nineteen Universal Crime Report and there is no there were no he hate crimes in twenty nineteen in Iowa reported to the FBI. But I know that that was not what actually happened. So I think a lot of people, even if they are having these ordinances, are not using them, and there must be a reason for that. And so I'm not sure that adding that something that we have in our code is, you know, the best way to kind of really express what our expectations of of people in North Liberty.
Brian, not to put you on the spot, but can you think of another way to do that?
Well, I I think that we've talked that, you know, it it generally would be uh an ordinance, if we were not going to use it, it sends a statement. Maybe we just make a statement. This is our expectations for people who live in North Liberty. And we can put that out there and put it on our website. We can set it as a council, the mayor can proclaim it. Uh, we can put it in other events. You know, just off the top of my head. Um, but I think that maybe if if that's our expectation and we want to promote that, maybe we should promote that instead of waiting for somebody to do something so that it can be made an example of, I guess, and maybe not exactly the right way of saying that, but you know, I'd much rather s- encourage better behavior than trying to uh correct somebody's stupid behavior.
In in that case, with the statement is at a resolution that we make versus the ordinance.
Um, council can pass a resolution, uh, you know, establishing that it's uh it's it's beliefs or or uh normative behavior that it wants to encourage or discourage.
Tell you what, let's try to work up Grant and Brian. Uh, work up a a possible resolution that presented to the council in next meeting. And, you know, we can work on the wording of it at that time. Although, and if they want to add something to it, council can. And that will be our stance as a community.
Mayor, I would also put out there to to our constituents that 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 are watching and will watch. Um, my phone number is available. My email address is published, as are all counselors. I I would really like to hear on this. So let me know thoughts. Let let me know what what the constituents in North Liberty are really looking for here uh so so that I can can be that positive voice in in the vote for this. I I'm I'm very interested in hearing back from from those that that I'm serving here.
Well, that goes for any of the council people, you know, the very respectful of the public.
Yeah, I would, I would say the same thing, and and I I don't know if I am ready to move ahead and say we just put this in a resolution. I don't think we got there uh tonight. Um, I I would absolutely love as much input as possible for uh for five of us to to make this decision in a couple of conversations at council meetings uh is a pretty daunting task. So um Brent's right. Um, our information is always out there in public for any topic uh of out there, but this is, this is one I think we should be actively soliciting um some some guidance on. Now, we're going to get what we get, and we are going to have to filter uh through those, through those things. Um, and and we'll, we'll have this conversation, I I hope, a lot more and and in depth. A a resolution is different than an ordinance. And um, you know, we'll talk more about this, but I I don't, I don't think I'm in the position to say we need to just move ahead with the resolutions tonight. I think we, I think we're still yet undecided, even on that front.
The thing is, our resolution in the past about mass usage and stuff in COVID nineteen was received very well by the public. You know, so they are listening. Like you said, they are listening. And yeah, if we need guidance from them, just as much as anybody else. And so we'll we'll want to give about a thirty day grace period to see what we get from the public and then put the thoughts together. What's there? Is that fair enough?
I think that's fair, Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So my only thought on that would be it's it's not necessarily an individual one-time event. You you need to incorporate it somehow into how we do things, because that's the important thing is is to encourage the good behavior and not just keep saying, oh, we did this once and now we're going to move on.
Uh huh. Very well put, very well put. Okay, old business. New business.
Well, I I was a little late on the mic here. I do have to go back to some old business and
Oh, that's fine.
and and recognize the fact that the North Liberty Golf outing occurred Friday. Pantry raised a lot of money. I assume there were a hundred and twenty of us that were able to participate in that. It scaled back a little bit from a hundred and fifty. Um, Kevin's got a little smirk on his face, but uh we pulled out the title again this year. Uh, we've been looking pretty strong, so um, higher, you weren't needed uh this this year either, man. Otherwise, it was a good event. Uh, the mayor, uh Brent, uh Rakisha, and I had an opportunity to get to that project to better together uh event last week, uh and it was uh it was a terrific event. My goodness, it was so great to see people in person um to shake hands and uh to stand next to people and and to to be part of that community. Um, that was uh that that was really what I was talking about, maybe the last meeting or two meetings ago, when I said we're going to have some conversation as our community. Um, it was because of that. Um, and sitting on the Think Iowa City Board, I was aware of that work coming towards us and I'm excited about our next council meeting uh when they will make an an official presentation onto this group. I think there's, there's a lot of opportunity in front of us.
Anything from anyone else?
Yeah, I have one thing, uh, just so I don't forget. Um, and maybe uh Ryan R. So maybe for the chicken thing is part of the process, could we have them um do a a public notice sign like they do for uh rezoning or um the variance thing? So that people would have a chance to know that these people were doing something and would maybe stimulate a little bit of conversation uh beforehand, before things got too far down the road, and maybe that would be um a way to kind of move things along and uh kind of check into that, so.
I think once we get back in council chambers, it makes everybody more accessible. And I think you'll, we'll see payoffs in that again. Because it seems like when we've had public hearings, it's not really a public hearing. You know, because people can't really access it that well. And that I I think we'll see some better things happen now. Anything else? Thank you for your time and consideration.
There.
To relate to your crew that finds out. Again, just let them know that. It's off to a good start.
Mayor, can I just add one uh one comment, please? And thank you. Uh, just a special recognition tonight. Uh, Kevin Trum uh has worked Shive Hattery, but with specifically with the city of North Liberty for twenty five years. Uh, he's just celebrated his twenty fifth anniversary, so uh, next time you see him, you can give him a pat on the back uh or a fist bump, but congratulations, Kevin. Thanks uh for all your efforts.
Do you start when you were like fifteen, or what happened here?
Not quite.
All right, folks. Thank you for a good evening and conversations. We are our germ. Enjoy the storm, maybe. It's getting rugged out there.